...to order this evening, would you all please rise and join me in the class? I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is Laisher, would you call them both, please. This is Delby. Here. Mr. Houser.
Here.
Mrs. Clayd.
Here.
Dr. Lachlan.
Here.
Mrs. Maynes.
Here.
Dr. Lachlan.
Here.
Mr. Muesen.
Here.
Mr. Colner.
Here.
Dr. Resort. Thank you. It is my duty to inform you that at 6:00 PM this evening, we have an executive session with the purpose of discussing personnel and a legal issue. At this point in our agenda, it's time for hearing of visitors, part one. I invite any member of the audience to address the board on any item that is on this evening's agenda. If you wish to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, there's a second hearing of visitors, part two, at the end of the meeting. Would anyone, at this point in time, care to address the board this evening? If so, please rise, come to the podium, state your name and address for us. Standing none, we will move on. I will move for adoption of resolution 2012, I'm sorry, 001. The approval of minutes, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting held June 26th. All those in favor of any discussion for us? All those in favor approving this minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Solicitors report, Mr. Naples?
No, quick.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan?
Yeah, Governor Corbett signed a couple acts, I'll just briefly go over. Act 82, which hanged even earlier to discuss about the plant contract moratorium, also had new system for viable for teacher violations and the changes related to student contracts. Act 85 expanded the educational improvement tax credit to $100 million, which fifty million goes to the lowest 15 percent performed in school, so we'll see that. Act 97 was the municipalities having to tell schools about any residential developments. Act 105 discussed recording the cost of benefit of Act 48, which is a continuing program for teachers, and that the Secretary of Education can't hold a hearing in a district that is under a contract impasse for greater than one year. Act 123 is doing a task force on homeless children's education. And Act 126 requires school entities and their independent contractors to provide mandatory training on child.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Lachlan? Education and planning in your packet, and number one is the July 24th enrollment report from Dr. Tepper. Is that pretty much including kindergarten registration?
Yeah, this is putting kindergarten registration, and we continue to have some students enroll as we speak. Uh-huh. And we're keeping an eye on it. We seem to be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, other questions for Dr. Tepper? Educational programs, Dr. Karana?
The first thing, we have received word and completed our application process for the Title I application for the 1314 school year. We have seen an increase of around $79,000 of Title I funds. That is good news. However, Mrs. Swagert and I have been watching, and we've learned about a new theory, is sequestration, and it's from the federal government, and we're looking at 1314, there wasn't that to happen now, but they will cut back, have significant cutbacks in federal aid to education. So there'll be more to come on that issue. But for the time being, we are seeing additional funds for Title I. Another good piece of news is, there was still some stimulus money that all of a sudden appeared, I'm not quite sure where it came from, and I'm not sure that they're aware of where it came from, but the federal government said, gave us another $10,000, $10,745 in stimulus money that we were able to apply for benefits. In terms of students this summer, our students have been participating in the enrichment programming offered for phys ed and, I believe, drama. We're looking to expand that as we move into the future. But also, we had summer school where around 80 students were served from all three elementary schools, at the Tru Elementary School and Bagley Elementary School this summer. And finally, in terms of professional development, I wish our math teacher leaders here. We're here again tonight because one of the things I want to talk about is, their work wasn't over the night they came and presented the math program to you. They've been working this summer, predilegently with their principals, to develop, to provide professional development for teachers from Harvard, and also to plan for the implementation phase, including the assessment piece, providing professional support to teachers, meeting gaps that may exist in our curriculum due to the change and so forth, and ongoing professional development. I just want to commend that group of people for their work, because I think it needs to be noted that they've continued on since then. So, that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Karana. I will move for adoption of resolution 002, approval of tuition students for 2012, 2013 as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approved resolution number 002. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I will move for adoption, resolution number 3, approval of textbook purchase. This is a textbook for the senior high art program. We only need 15 of them, and it's history, Western Art, I believe, for Dr. Karana has a copy. And they would be $62.91. So I move for adoption of resolution number 4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the purchase of that textbook. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I will move for the adoption of resolution number 4, approval of the Little Lincoln online service that we discussed previously.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 4. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 4, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I will move for adoption of resolution number 5, the school district agreement with Leader Services Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 5. Computer services. Dr. Colner?
Yes, this is a company that we've worked with in the past that provides us with technical assistance in order to build access or services that are medically necessary, related services for special education students.
Any other questions on that resolution? All those in favor of approving resolution number 5, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. I'll move for adoption of resolution number 6, transition services agreement with the WIU work discovered.
May I say that?
Anyone else have a second?
Second.
Second.
This is for our student, there are two contracts, you'll see, one is for three days a week and one is for five days a week. The student is currently attending a class at the classroom in the Louisville. This will be less expensive for him to come to this, but we're going to do it gradually, starting from that three days a week, and as it becomes successful, we'll move to five days a week, and it will be a savings for the district as well, so good thing for the student.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 6, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And I will move for adoption of resolution number 7, this is a school district agreement with Polly and Gray, which is an independent consultant for speech therapy services at $68 per hour. Do I hear a second?
Carter?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 7. Any questions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. And lastly, I move for adoption of resolution number 8, to approve an out-of-state student trip for the cross-country team to Virginia.
Second.
We've moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 8. Any questions or comments on that resolution? All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. I finished with my report, I'll move to finance with Mrs. Delby.
Thank you. I'll move for adoption of resolution number 009 and 010, the treasure reports and the payment of bills.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt the two resolutions, 009 and 010. Any questions on either one? Standing none, all those in favor of adopting those two resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those pass unanimously.
Thank you. I'll move for adoption of resolution number 011, to accept a list of grants from the McFeely-Rogers Foundation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 011. Questions or comments?
I understand that the people in the audience also have copies of the agenda, but I think that it's worth the time to say what these grants are, because this is a continuation of a series, and it certainly is a series that makes the life of our students richer, it makes the budgeting for our school district easier, it's just a gift, a true gift to this community. And the grants listed are $4,000 directed to the Art Conservation Trust for the Rogers Performance Series, $1,400 for the first installment of three-year grant directed to the GLSD Art Conservation Culture across the curriculum program, $1,400 as the first installment of three-year, $4,200 grant directed to the Cultural Enrichment Learning Support Program and its nutritional cost for the 1112 school year, and $9,000 first installment of a three-year $27,000 grant to the Rural-Trope Art Series, a $9,000 grant as the first installment of a three-year $27,000 grant directed to GLSD Elementary Schools Cultural Enrichment, a lasting value program. And finally, $4,500, the first installment of a three-year $13,500 grant to the district's new education project of the multi-sensory room at Bagley Elementary School. Those are all wonderful things that add so much to our district, and we are so fortunate to have the McFeely-Rogers Foundation doing things for us on a very constant, very conscious level, and I hope that we thank them, I certainly do thank them.
I do too, and I think we always, the district, appreciate that very much. We're one of the few school districts who can offer this type of thing, and it's thanks to the McFeely-Rogers Foundation. Cultural enrichment is such an important part in education, and we're so lucky to have this type of commitment from the McFeely-Rogers Foundation that just totally enriches the cultural life of our students. So we thank them very, very much.
Excuse me, but that should be the 1213 school year and not the 1112?
I wondered about that, thank you. On the $14,000, when it should be the 1213 school year instead of 1112. I thought maybe they were paying back for something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the resolution? All those in favor then of adopting resolution number 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously.
I'll move for adoption of resolution number 12, which is regarding tax exonerations. It's... Mr. Watson, do you want to remind me just a little bit?
I shall.
We have a second. We have a second first. That's all. We have a second? Second, thank you.
This is sort of just a formality that we get for every year. There are 844 exemptions this year. Those are 844 individuals that are exempt from paying the $5 per capita tax. There's a breakdown, I don't believe it was included in the package, but 17 of those were just duplicate billed, meaning that they moved into the district after the fact and already paid their $5 to another district, so therefore they're exempt from paying from ours. 106 individuals that were originally billed are deceased, so obviously they're exonerated. There is a, if you have to earn literally $5,000 a year, you have to earn literally $5,000 a year to pay the tax. There are 394 of those individuals that did not meet that requirement, so they're exonerated. Nursing home residents and non-residents, meaning individuals who resided in the district but have moved elsewhere, make up the balance of that. So again, it's just more or less a formality that we have to approve these. Any questions on that? And then, any of the, any of those that have not paid any of the linkwinds for kind of to, we deal with the county municipal services for the linkwinds tax collection for our practice, so they will continue to pursue those at five.
Any questions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number 18, to authorize fund balance transfer.
Dr. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 13. Any discussion, questions?
I think this is a very important action that we're taking. We're moving a million dollars from the general fund, undersigned fund balance, into a restricted for capital projects, the capital projects fund. And the money will actually move from one bank account to another, and we have, the Harvard Supply Committee has been compiling a list of necessary repairs that are forthcoming in the district, and I think it's essential that we set this money aside so that it's available for those things that may come up. And as the last section of the resolution says, that all parts of this resolution can be put back into the general fund if this board so chooses. But we've been asked in the past whether any part of our general fund is, general fund balance is designated for anything, and it should have been probably, and this is a way to correct that, because we certainly have a list that adds up to be well over a million dollars if we were to do it all at once. That doesn't mean that we are intending to do it all at once, but we are attempting to have the funds available if that becomes necessary.
It's been moved and seconded, then we adopt resolution number 13. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that also passes unanimously.
Thank you, and the finance committee minutes are in your packet, and they are very informative. Please take a look at those. The next meeting, the finance committee, will leave the first, might say, in August, which is the first of August, at 10 o'clock in Independence, Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Delby.
Just real quick, some of this right there. Yeah, on the ABG money, that was kind of where you hit the bottom, is when you come back?
Yes, yes it is. Yeah, we, historically, we appreciate about $172,000. And if you remember last year, meaning when we were developing the 1112 budget?
Right.
They, you know, put it in at the last minute, so throughout this development process, we assumed that they would reap a stable portion of it, and it was almost the exact same dollar.
Yeah, about that, that's, that's, that's what I was.
Anything else to come up other than this?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. How many supplies, Mrs. Cozar?
Yes, I'd like to add something to my agenda from access.
Hi, everyone. I will be brief, just to give you an update of the current projects. We are still on schedule. The schematic design portion has been completed, the design development portion has been completed. We're in the process of the construction document section, we're about halfway finished with that. It is scheduled to complete by the end of September, and we're scheduled to bid in October and start construction November, take about a 12-month process to, during construction. What's, some of the things happening this week, or this month, are, we, we met with Unity Township to go over the project, and are on the agenda for an advisory meeting with the Planning Commission on August 7th, and that gets us in line to get our final approval from them at their September 4th meeting, which puts us in line to go in front of the supervisors on September 13th and get approval, meeting our bid schedule, so that all seems to be going along as anticipated. All of our MEP consultants, structural consultants, city management consultants are all well underway, they're on board, they've been working for several months now. See no, no issues with the schedule as of now, moving right on. Any questions?
Hey, when will we, when will we get the preliminary budgets, that we've worked on preliminary budgets, come along with this phase?
I've started working on updating the estimates that we have done in the schematic design phase, and to let you know preliminarily, the numbers, although are shuffling amongst themselves, the overall number is where.
Where it's been?
Where it's been, yes, so.
What percentage of CNDs are we running now?
We are probably past 50%.
So you're, you're to start the preliminary?
Right, right. It's, it's the, the way that usually works, the architectural ones are farther along than the MEP ones, and they're, they're now ramping up to finish, because they, a lot of the things they can't do till after they get the information from us.
Anything else? Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Cozar, could you pull the line, we've been talking for a second.
Okay, and secondly, I'd like to move to the adoption of resolution number 14, the dinner work for the senior high school auditorium stage.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, that we adopt resolution number 14. Any questions or comments on that resolution? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the minutes of the progress planning, the last progress planning in Whiteville, are in the pocket, and the next progress planning meeting will be Thursday, August 9th, at 3:30 at the Central Conference.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Cozar. Student activities and recognition, Dr. Lachlan?
Informationally, Stiller Day is Friday, August 3rd, the festival's starting at 11, and the gates stay open until 5:00. In addition, we're also ongoing right now is the coaches concussion training that I'll look at this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. Community relations, Dr. Resort?
There's a meeting minutes from the recreation commission, item number four.
Thank you. Westmoreland Elementary Unit, um... You didn't actually say their minutes? No? Okay. Okay, their, their last meeting, we also had a meeting that I think will go to 10, but I'll make sure that they do send the minutes in that meeting for conclusion in the August. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozar?
Yeah, the minutes of our last meeting, which was June 27th, are in the pocket.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozar. Word policy, PSBA liaison, Mrs. Delby?
Yes, PSBA has been sending us new lodges of policies with what, qualifications, there aren't really changes, because they can change our policy, but they, what modification is necessary because of changing laws or changes in the school code, they let us know, and now I have three lodges to me, and I haven't, I haven't gotten these two, numbers two and three yet. So there's that. And then, this has to do with the delegates for the PSBA, 2012, which is the Policy Council, which will be at the school leadership conference in Pershing in October. So this, this is sort of the first blush of, please sign up for this. If you need to make a reservation, you need to do that as soon as possible with Mrs. Laisher, because those rooms go fast, and we're probably a little late inside already. So please let her know if you're interested in attending, and if you're interested in attending, of course, we'll make you be a delegate. And, and we're, we're talking here about the first water change. I mean, this is, this is a huge pile of paper, and the, the changes are very small. So I'll move for adoption of resolution number 15, which is the intent, I am persuading, to adopt revisions to board policy series 000, 100, 200, 300, 600, 700, 800, and 900.
Scott? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 15. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. Transportation, Dr. Lachlan?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for the adoption of resolution number 016, transportation contract for 2012, 2013 school year for these individuals listed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we adopt resolution number 16. Any questions or comments?
The common opinion, these individuals live in the area the district works impossible to provide any form of transportation to them, it's too dangerous to bring a bus to them, hence, we have to reimburse the families transporting their own children to school.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Standing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution number 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously.
I also move for the adoption of resolution number 017, intended for 2012, 2013 vehicle transportation schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we adopt resolution number 17. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay?
I would like to inform members of the board, the next transportation meeting will be held tomorrow, July 25th, at 3:00 PM, Senior Center Conference Room. It looks to be an exciting meeting as we discuss RFP, the future transportation contracts. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. Acknowledging, Mr. Colner?
Thank you. I would ask the board to approve resolution number 018, to approve the purchase of smart boards for elementary grades K-2, for the $269, $500. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number 18, to approve the smart board purchase. Any comments? Any comments or questions? All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose?
And lunch will arrive at the next meeting date, so our next meeting date is 5:14, is next day, 11:00. It's six o'clock here.
Six o'clock, eight fourteen. Thank you.
That concludes.
Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Kozar?
I ask the board to move on Resolution Number 019, the resignations that are noted on the bottom of the page and the top of page eight. I'd like to make a special note, two of the resignations, not that they're all not important, but Frank Crennyst, who served as physical education teacher here at senior high school for quite a few years, recently resigned to take a job near his new home. And also, just yesterday, we received the letter of retirement from Richard Zusta, who has taught social studies at our junior high school for 35-plus years approximately. We appreciate his service to the district, and we wish both of them good luck in their future endeavors. We also have some resignations regarding some extracurricular positions listed here as
I'll move. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 19. All those, any questions, comments? All those in favor of adopting that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 020, which is the professional personnel recommendations listed.
I'll move. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 20, professional personnel appointments. All that, any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution 021, which is the professional personnel appointments for substitute teachers. You'll notice the list is inclusive of two pages listed in the resolution. We do this and update it monthly. We thought we would approve the initial list in July to get them in the AESOP software so that if there are teachers who are looking for subs or subs who are looking for positions, they can start looking now. We will update this again next month.
So move. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 2021, professional personnel appointments. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 022, the administrative Act 93 appointment of Matthew Shivitz as a senior high school assistant principal in a 10-month position starting at a salary of $65,000.
So move. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 022, administrative appointment. Any comments or questions on the resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? Thank you, that passes unanimously.
I'd like to note, Matt, in the audience, if you'd like to stand, and we'd like to We should also note, his wife, four weeks is sitting. She is here to show support, so she should be around. Welcome aboard. I'd like to move on Resolution Number 023, the support personnel recommendations that are listed above.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 023. Support personnel recommendations. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 023, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? That passes unanimously also.
And I'd like the board to, I'd like to make recommendations to the board to move on Resolution Number 024, the volleyball coordinator, which is, again, Anthony Fassiano.
I'll move. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 024. Any questions or comments on that?
What is a problem with four minutes?
I will let Martin, I'll respond.
Is each season, there's a coordinator that kind of assists. They go to the events. I can't be there. They make sure that the referees are paid. They make sure that the team gets there. They confirm it throughout the day. They help with the fall schedules. Matt's actually assigned in the athletic office one period of the day where he helps prepare for the next day of fall sports, make sure that team's lineup, confirming our time was supposed to be places, and help put the next year's schedule together when it comes out. Kind of like a super seasonal assistant, so that when I can't be there, someone is on site to help.
How many years have we had this position?
This was created three years ago.
This is the third year in these are seasonal positions. They end after every year, so they need to be reappointed each year.
And what happened is when they combined the two jobs, athletics and transportation, they realized there was going to be stretches, like in the winter, when you're up at the parade, basketball game, 11, you're going to go so long. So rather than having to assist an A-League type thing, they said, we'll give you a coordinator to help you cover some events when you can't be there. And it's actually worked out very, very well. They all do a good job. Well, I'll, to not frankly, I'll answer. Absolutely a good job.
I, I think it all, it should be said too, that they keep a list of the hours that they spend and what they do. And it's proven that the job is necessary, and it's worked out as a way to have the two administrative jobs combined without hiring another person, an assistant to either of
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 024, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? That passes unanimously.
And I'd like to make recommendations to the board to approve Resolution Number 025, the teacher leader recommendations for the 2012, 2013 school year. They're listed by department and by grade level.
Any questions or comments?
Well, question. I'll move.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Mrs. Elder has moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the resolution?
Yes, what's happening to junior high search study?
Well, since we just got the resignation yesterday, we will move forward in trying to find someone else for the teacher leader, but it really was last minute, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 025, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? Say nay. And I abstain from that.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 026, which is to approve an unpaid leave for our guidance counselor and junior high school school counselor, excuse me, Sarah Scapala, from August 27th through October 23rd, to do her school principal internship at Fox Chapel School District.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 026. Questions or comments on that resolution? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 026, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose?
And under other business, Mr. Laccio just gave me a note before, and we'd like to recognize one of our teachers in the high school, Ben Murray, who is a member of the American Oral Directors Association, and they have nominated Ben as the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, excuse me, Division Young Conductor of the Year Award. Ben has been with the district, this is his, starting his third year, fourth year? Help me.
Third.
Third, okay. I was hoping you hadn't gone that quickly. Ben, you probably might all know him. Helps with the school musicals, maybe most of you might have seen him there, but if you've ever visited one of his concerts, they truly are amazing. And this is quite a nice award for one of our teachers. As I understand it, every one in the state nominates someone, and when you look at the criteria, the outstanding leadership and musicianship is certainly the one that stands out as recognizing Ben. So congratulations to Mr. Murray.
Very nice. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to hearing visitors, part two. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak to the board about anything that does not appear on tonight's agenda. Again, if you wish to speak to the board, approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Just to gain 23 cents at Greensboro. Maybe I missed this, but are you replacing Mrs. Price, the nurse at Mountain View?
I can, can I say that? Yes, what we are actually doing is Shirley, Mrs. Herbline, who is a certified school nurse at Bagley Elementary School, as well as Mrs. Bev Raymond, who is a registered nurse. Between the two of those, they will be replacing Mrs. Price. They're working together as a team. The days that Mrs. Herbline is not at Mountain View, Mrs. Raymond will be at Mountain View. And we are replaced, we've already replaced Mrs. Raymond, the health assistant, who rotated around the building, so we have the same number of nurses and support staff as we had before. Someone's still there. I really like Mrs. Price. Thank you.
She has retired.
Anyone else from the audience wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I saw you.
I thought you all just wanted to stay here too. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone pose? Okay, thank you for your time.